All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan McCarron. I'm the Director at the Mass Division of Marine Fisheries. And tonight we are taking public comment on a suite of regulations affecting recreational fishing, specifically those for black sea bass, summer flounder and scup, which are managed through the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission and the Mid-Atlantic Council, as well as some regulations regarding cod in Haddock in the Gulf of Maine and in Georgia's Bank. And that is a set of rules to complement that which is managed by the New England Fisheries Management Council and the National Marine Fisheries Service. So we have a series of emergency rules. We're going to take comment on tonight. This hearing tonight is being held as part of the open comment period, and it's going to remain open through Friday, June 10. Jared, next slide. Virtual rules of engagement, those of you who have attended these public hearings in the past are probably familiar with this. The purpose is tonight to give all interested parties an opportunity to submit, you know, opinions, comments, et cetera, and also to give you an opportunity to become informed. And if you wanted to send a written comment, you could do that as well. As far as any matters beyond the scope of tonight's public hearing, we will be happy to, at the end of the hearing, close the hearing and take questions as we often do in a non-virtual meeting format. But this is a good opportunity to meet with our stakeholders. All members of the public are muted through this presentation. If when you raise your hand, the meeting moderator tonight is Jared Silver will call upon you and give you an opportunity to speak. We have disabled the chat and question and answer function. We've always found it's very difficult if there are a lot of side conversations going on in the background, and it's best to have everybody focus on the presentation at hand. But I think that's served us well. The timeline for rulemaking, we announced these rules on, at least for the scup, sea bass and flounder, back at the end of April. And this was to get the rules in place prior to those fish arriving in our southern shores, which they do every spring. This is a difficult process for us because the requirements of the interstate plan force us to make often annual adjustments based on data that is often not released to us until after New Year's, sometimes as late as February. And it's our, it's our burden, our job to take that information and propose and enact rules in time to get them in effect by the beginning of the fishing year. Under normal circumstances, a regulation takes four to six months to promulgate. So you can see something like that can't be done under normal rulemaking. Therefore, we use the emergency authority that is given to the Division Marine Fisheries to put things into effect much sooner. As far as the other Gulf of Maine cod and haddock rules, those were also proposed, but we are waiting the New England Management Councils and National Marine Fisheries Service, specifically their final decisions on that. And so we will be enacting those rules as soon as they're enacted by the National Marine Fisheries Service. Tonight is the virtual public hearing. This Friday, we conclude the written comment period. And the next Thursday, the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission meets in order to review the proposals and take final action on these rules. The way regulations work in Massachusetts for Marine Fisheries, the Director makes proposals and the Commission's responsibility is to accept or reject those. We cannot enact a final rule or an amendment to a rule other than an emergency. We can't do that without the Commission's approval. And so anyway, so that's, that's the important rule that they play. The rules are currently in effect for black sea bass, scup and fluke. And the action we're taking next week will be to make them go beyond the 90-day period, which is the limits of an emergency rule. Next slide, Jared. Okay, so we have four, well, three species to talk about. And then, you know, as far as our southern suite goes, black sea bass, summer flounder and scup. And then we've got some regulations to discuss regarding cod and haddock, two different stocks, Gulf of Maine and Southern New England. So I'm going to ask Jared Silver, who's our regulation specialist, to give a series of public, I'm sorry, a series of presentations that provide the background for the proposals. And we can take questions as we go. Probably best to hold the questions until we finish each of the species. Jared, is that what you prefer?
I can take questions at the end of each species. And I think we would probably be best to have comments on each at the conclusion of the hearing, since these are some pretty brief slides on each each species.
Okay. And I would add that tonight, we have in attendance the Chairman Raymond Kane, as well as the Vice Chairman Mike Pirdanak from our Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission. Okay, Jared, why don't you take it away on some of these particular species issues?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. So we'll begin with the three species from the southern suite of fluke, black sea bass and scup. These species are managed at a interstate and federal level through the Mid-Atlantic Fisheries Management Council, the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission, and the states are to implement regulations that comply with those management plans and the actions taken by those federal and interstate bodies. Our annual regulatory process is driven by a review of each year's or recent year's emmerich harvest estimates against the current year's coastwide recreational harvest limit. So that's the estimate of overall recreational catch against the coastwide harvest limit. Then that data is modeled to develop state or regional recreational bag limit, size limit, season options to achieve the established reduction or liberalization as required by that comparison of the emmerich harvest estimate to the recreational harvest limit. You know, as Dan stated in his introductory comments, this process typically occurs at the end of the calendar year and into the early part of the present calendar year. So for this past season, on December 14th, the Mid-Atlantic Council and the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission agreed on harvest reduction and liberalization percentages for each species. On January 25th, the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission approved the methods to be used for analyses of regulations. February 8th, the Council and Commission revised its black sea bass percent reduction based on an earlier analysis. February 17th, DMF held, that should read scoping meetings or coping meetings, but scoping meetings to discuss potential bag limit, season, size limit options for the Commonwealth and to gauge our stakeholders' interest in each of those and kind of describe the management process and why we're taking the steps we're planning on taking. On March 10th, the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission reviewed and supported DMF's preferred measures, which were shown on the prior slide. That'll go on subsequent slides in more detail. On March 24th, the Commission approved the state interregional regulatory proposals. And then we informally announced those on March 25th. And then on April 29th, formally announced them with this public hearing notice. So I'll begin with black sea bass. For 2022, there was a mandatory coastwide reduction in harvest applied equally to each region. The regions are the northern region of Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey, and the southern region of Delaware to North Carolina. So there was a mandatory 20.7% reduction in harvest, and that follows this gray line, which is the emmerich harvest analysis compared to the blue line, which is the which is the recreational harvest limit for that year. So if you see this 2022 blue harvest line is far below the emmerich harvest for the year. So it was required to take a 20.7% reduction. So the RHL is 6.74 million pounds for 2022. And over the past four years, the average annual coastwide harvest has been approximately 8.51 million pounds. Massachusetts, the Massachusetts to New York northern region agreed to a 16-inch minimum size across all states. And then for the states to develop state-specific seasons and bag limits to match kind of how their fishery occurs, we're fairly unique in the region in that we have a strong springtime fishery in May and June, when the fish are inshore in our waters, that then dissipates towards the towards the summer as the water is warm and the fish move back offshore. So in Massachusetts, we look to reduce the season by three days at the beginning by moving that start day from May 18th to May 21 and four days at the end by moving the closure day from September 8th to September 4th, reduce the bay and then reduce the bag limit by one fish and implement that 16-inch minimum size. And the goal of that was to balance impacts across all users. And again, as our fishery occurs primarily in the May and June months, harvest reductions at that time of year achieve greater reductions in harvest than harvest reduction methods at other times in the year. So what we're proposed, what we enacted by emergency regulation was the May 21 to September 4th open season, four fish per angler bag limit and 16-inch minimum size. At present, we'll be taking comments, comments tonight and in writing comments through the end of this week on enacting that as a final regulation for the remainder of the season. At this time, I will take questions. If you have a comment, I'd ask you to please save it for the end. All right, I'm not seeing any questions. I'm going to move on to the next species, which is summer flounder. For summer flounder, a 16.5% regional increase is allowed. Again, if you compare the emmerich harvest data to the RHL, you will see that the that the RHL is higher than the emmerich harvest estimates. So based on a 10.36 billion pound recreational harvest limit for 2022 and a 7.79 million pound coastwide harvest over the past four years, we can liberalize by about 33% in harvest. The ASOFC and Mid-Atlantic Council decided to take a conservative approach, given high interannual variability in harvest and the expected recruitment of the 2018-year classes of the 2022 fishery, perhaps driving harvest more than the would have been captured in the prior year's estimates. So rather than yo-yoing this, they decided, you know, having to go back in 2023 and potentially cut measures because we underestimated potential harvest in 2022. They took the conservative approach and are allowing for a liberalization of 50% of what's allowed, that's 16 and a half percent. So based on the public comments received at that February 17th scoping meeting and internal analysis and discussions with her Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission, we decided to focus on a size limit decrease, which was shown to probably be the most effective way at increasing summer flounder harvest. We don't achieve the five fish per angler bag limit with great frequency. So increasing that would not have a substantial effect on harvest, as well as the season generally spans that period of time when the species is available in our nearshore waters and accessible to recreational anglers. So the focus was on increasing or decreasing that minimum size to enhance retention of caught fish. We also wanted to align the season start date with black sea bass, as these species are often commonly caught together. So we would open the season on May 21, close on September 29, maintain the five fish per angler bag limit and adopt a 16.5-inch minimum size. That 16.5-inch minimum size and the opening of the season two days early, the combined effect of that was such that it would have achieved more than a 16.5% harvest increase. So we did opt to close the season several days earlier by moving that closure date from October 9th to September 29. And these regulations were put into effect on April 29th under our emergency authority. And tonight, we're seeking comment on these regulations and finalizing them for the remainder of the 2022 season. Yet I'll take questions. If there are no questions, I will go on to the next species. I'm not seeing any questions. I'm going to go on to scup. So scup will manage similarly to summer flounder and sea bass, what was what was decided to meet the 33% mandatory coastwide reduction in harvest was for all states to increase their minimum size by one inch for 2022. So like the other species, you compare the RHL to the emmerich data for the prior year to determine what needed to be done or what needs to be done for the upcoming year. We have a 6.08 million pound recreational harvest limit and an average annual harvest of 13.9 million pounds over the past three years. This indicated that a 56% reduction in harvest was needed. The states through the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission opted to only, and the Mid-Atlantic Council opted to only implement a one-inch minimum size that only achieves a 33% reduction in harvest. This, the additional reduction of harvest was argued was unnecessary, given the consideration of the stock status. It's double, it's approximately double, it's biomass, it's target biomass, in expected underutilization of the overall annual catch limit due to underutilization of the commercial quotas on a coastwide basis and the socioeconomic impacts of reduce harvest by 56%, particularly given the status of the stock and expected ACL underage. Underages in response, NOAA Fisheries has proposed to close federal waters to achieve the remaining reduction. So to close that gap between a 33% and a 56% reduction. So what that means for Massachusetts is simply increasing the minimum size from nine inches to 10 inches. All other management measures will remain status quo. So for private anglers are on fishing from a vessel or shore, that's a January 1 through December 31 open fishing season with a 30 fish per angler bag limit or 150 fish per vessel limit. So if there's more than five anglers onboard a vessel at any time, the maximum retention of scup is 150 fish rather than that 30 fish per angler limit. On the for hire side, we have, we do have mode-specific rules here that allow 30 fish during the January 1 through April 30th period and July 1 through December 31 and a for what we call it the for hire bonus season of May 1 through June 30, where anglers on for hire vessels are allowed 50 fish. Those are historic allowances. And again, the only thing that's changing this year is the minimum size from nine inches to 10 inches. I'll take any questions on these. If not, I'm going to proceed to the cod and haddock. Not seeing any questions. Okay, so um, the cod and haddock are managed somewhat differently than the southern species. They're managed by the New England Fishery Management Council, not the Mid-Atlantic Fishery Management Council and the Atlantic States Fisheries Fisheries Commission. So the process for setting these is somewhat different. But in effect, the New England Fishery Management Council makes recommendations to NOAA Fisheries and then NOAA Fisheries establishes federal regulations to implement these, oftentimes adopting the recommendations made by the council. As these fisheries for cod and haddock principally occur in federal waters, we, as the state regulatory agency, move to adopt complementary measures. What that does is allow anglers fishing for these species in Massachusetts to retain fish consistent with the federal limits and not undermine the federal conservation objectives by having, you know, less restrictive limits than the federal government for these species, as well as allowing anglers fishing in federal waters to lawfully land the fish caught in federal waters in Massachusetts port. So fishing on Jeffrey's ledge, you know, federal waters and coming back and landing that fishing gloucester. You know, we want our state limits to match the federal limits. So the fish you caught on Jeffrey's ledge can be, can be brought home with you. So for 2022 or fishing year 2022, which is defined as May 1, 2022 through April 30th, 2023, the New England Fishery Management Council has allocated a sub ACL for the recreational Gulf of Maine cod fishery of 423,288 pounds, based on this and a review of emmerich harvest information and a socioeconomic survey they do, they determine a September 1 through October 7th open and April 1 through April 14th open season with a one-fish bag limit at 22-inch minimum size was appropriate. This increases the fall season for both the private mode and the for hire mode. And as a result, all by providing that additional access to minimum size is also increased by one inch from 21 inches to 22 inches. As Dan stated, the outside of this NOAA Fisheries is still currently reviewing these recommendations, and we will adopt complementary measures once the federal government enacts the, their final rules. We'll do that first by emergency and then by final regulation to make sure that there isn't a period of time where state rules are out of phase with the federal rules. I'll take any questions on Gulf of Maine cod. Not seeing any. I'll move on to Gulf of Maine haddock. Process is same as the process for Gulf of Maine cod, so I won't reiterate all of what I just said. I'll just underline the fact that the the sub ACL for the stock is approximately eight million pounds to a cod to achieve but not exceed that sub ACL. The Council approved a five-fish bag limit increase, moving that from 15 fish to 20 fish. It's maintaining the status quo seasons, which basically closes the month of March and the recreational minimum size of 17 inches. Any questions on haddock? No questions on haddock. I'll move to the last agenda item tonight, which is Southern New England, Georgia's Bank cod. Again, same process here. So I'll save you all the regurgitating those details again, but it's a 300, there's a about a 50% reduction in the sub ACL for Georgia's bank cod as a result of an overall decline in the resource. So the ACL is being reduced from about 300,000 pounds in recent years to 163,000 pounds for this coming year. As a result, the season is being truncated, as is the bag limit, and the size limit's being adjusted from a minimum size limit to a slot limit. So to achieve that reduction in harvest, they're looking to move the season from January 1st to December 31 to August 1 to April 30th, reduce the bag limit from 10 fish to five fish and adjust the size limit for 21-inch minimum size to a 22, greater than 22-inch and less than 28-inch slot limit. So at this time, I will take questions on any of these. If there are no questions, I can proceed to comments. Mike Pirdanak, you can unmute yourself.
Hey, thank you, Jared. And thank you for your presentation. You know, it's apparent based upon what you're saying that we're waiting for decisions to be made by the feds. Is there any idea or you have any indication of when that will likely take place for Georgia's bank or Gulf of Maine?
I don't, Mike. I have been speaking with my colleagues on the federal end. And the best details I have gotten out of them is that they're under review at headquarters. So I don't, unfortunately, I don't have a better answer than that. I was expecting, based on my initial correspondence with a early June turnaround, we're now, you know, mid-June. And I still haven't heard much of a change there. Kelly Whitmore, you're on tonight. You work on the federal fisheries management issues. Do you have any further insight into that?
I'm sorry, Jared. I just got connected to the audio. It was, I was having a delay on that. I missed a question.
Mike Pirdanak was asking about the federal rulemaking timeline. I had, I've spoken with our colleagues over at NOAA and I haven't gotten anything other than it's under review at headquarters. And I was curious if you had any additional information.
No, I don't have any further information. Yeah, that's, I don't, I don't know anything more than that. If that's what you're, yeah, you receive a response, sorry.
Thank you, Kelly. But Mike, that's the, that's the best I can do.
No, thank you, Jared. That's consistent with, you know, a few months ago, my understanding was May or June. And now we're getting beyond that, and I have not heard any estimate at this date. Thank you.
Peter Oldack, you're recognized. You can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Hi, Jared, can you hear me?
I can, Peter.
Um, thank you for putting this presentation on. I'm a recreational fisherman, fish out of the Marmac River and fish Jeffries primarily for haddock. I'm one of the volunteer scientists that are monitoring the haddock and cod ratios of capture as to what supports the haddock fishery. I believe the dates you've got set up for those in the Gulf of Maine, for those of us in northern Massachusetts, are not realistic. The April 1st to April 14th date, we still have ice floes coming down the Marmac. There are no marinas open. There are no docks. There are no slips open. The only people who can get out are those people who launch for the day. And most people who launch for a day fishing have small enough boats that it really represents a health risk to try to get out to Jeffries and fish. And so for the northern Gulf of Maine area in Massachusetts, it would be nice if there was a period in either July or August where we could get out and fish. And the other one at the end of September, beginning of October, is the height of the hurricane season. And last year, there was tremendously high waves and bad weather, which negated any chance to get out for that. So if you're really interested in trying to offer the recreational fishermen in the Marmac or the northern area of the Gulf of Maine, it would be nice to have a period that's open in July or August and so on. This is particularly true if you look to the south, where cod, the people in the Cape Cod area are able to take five fish. We're only, if we're lucky, we're only able to take one, and the time available to us is fairly limited.
I appreciate that comment, Peter. My understanding is that in order to achieve but not exceed the very small ACL of 423,000 pounds for Gulf of Maine cod, the federal government likely develops these regulations to allow fishing at times where fishing may be occurring, but catch rates may not be particularly high. And that's why you might be seeing that occurring in September and October, where where weather might be intermittent in April, where, you know, there might be a factor precluding people from consistently getting out on the water. So that, that's my take on that. But I do appreciate the comment.
Well, thank you very much. And as I said, the, the periods that are open to those of us in the Marmac River, and there are a fair number of fishermen in the Marmac River who go out to Jeffries fishing for haddock. We're just off the map right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Peter. Thank you for the comment. All right. At this time, I'll take any other comments from the All right, at this time, I'll take any other comments from the public. So if you have a comment, please use the hand raised function. And I'll, I'll call on you. Vice Chairman Pernok, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, thank you. It really is a question. Tomorrow, the Mid-Atlantic is going to have some discussions about these various species. Scup, for example, which. My understanding is, is that the feds have not made a decision. Or, or the, the, the potential decision that the closure in federal waters may not occur. In the event that happens, what's then the process for D M F to. Change the regulations to reflect what may then be in place federally. If it's different than what you already have proposed. It may not be the case, but if in the event something like that was to occur. Do you have the ability then to do that within the next few weeks? Or do you have to go out for another public comment meeting and implement it that way?
We would have to file emergency regulations if it's going to change anything from the baseline as described on this current slide. And then follow that up with a public hearing to codify it for the remainder of the year. As if, if it were to be in place for a period of time longer than that initial ninety day emergency period. I, I anticipate we would be able to get any necessary changes implemented within several weeks. But it would certainly be a challenge.
Thank you, Jared.
Brian Whedon, you're recognized. You can unmute yourself.
When you went on, Natausuis Moskuta, Nutomas Masipia, I said, good evening. My name is Bearhart and I come from Mashpee. Good evening, commissioners, Director McKernan and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening on behalf of the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe. Please accept this testimony into the public record for these proceedings, as well as the tribe's written comments submitted to Director McKernan. I am Brian Whedon and I have the privilege of serving as the tribal council chairman to the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe. I speak now on behalf of our tribal nation and our future generations. The tribe is a sovereign nation with reservations lands located in Massachusetts on our Aboriginal territory. On behalf of the tribe, I am here to offer testimony on the pending amendments to the Department of Marine Fisheries regulations. And to reiterate the tribe's request for meaningful consultation on these and all future regulations proposed by D M F. For any other state agency regulations that may be unlawfully used in an attempt to deprive our people of their Aboriginal and ancient ways. In the interest of time, I will refer you to the May seventeenth, twenty twenty two correspondence submitted into the record that briefly outlines the state and federal protections. That acknowledge our Aboriginal rights. Our people continue to fish and hunt to sustain their families and communities as they have done for thousands of years. Our tribal leadership is committed to protecting these rights, which are held individually by each citizen of our sovereign nation. Our Aboriginal and ancient ways include the ability to freely harvest, forage, hunt, gather and trap. And we do so sustainably as good stewards to the land and waters. This is our Wampanoag way of life and intrinsic to our rich culture and history. We teach our children this way of life. Despite our rich history, state and federal case law, treaties and executive actions that have, should have made clear that we fully retain our legal rights. We continue to face harassment and threats of enforcement action by local and state officials on a daily basis. Regulatory authority is being used to criminalize our way of life and harass our people for exercising their legal rights. This harassment must stop and we believe that the education and consultation is the most effective way forward. We welcome the opportunity to sit with Department of Marine Fisheries and other state agencies to discuss how the Commonwealth will uphold its commitment. To protect our sovereign rights and how staff and officers can be educated on this process. To ensure these new regulations do not become yet another vehicle to attempt the disenfranchise of us. I'd also like to note that to date, we still have not received a response from our letter that was sent. And to remind you of the Commonwealth's obligations and executive order number one twenty six issued on July eighth, nineteen seventy six by Governor DeCaucus. In section one, state agencies shall deal directly with Mash Wampanoag Indian Tribal Council on matters affecting the Mashpee Tribe. Section four, the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs shall investigate problems common to Indian residents of the Commonwealth. And shall assist tribal councils, Indian organizations and individuals in their dealing with agencies of state and local government. All state agencies are to cooperate with the commission and the performance of these important functions, as well as other functions assigned by its statute. The same level of cooperation will be extended to the tribal councils and intertribal organizations in determining which program requires a special Native American emphasis within their areas. Section seven, in addition to seeking the advice of the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs, the appropriate tribal councils and other legitimate tribal representatives. As appropriate, respect to matters affecting Native Americans and within jurisdictions of such groups. State agencies should also attempt to include Native Americans on boards and commissions, particularly those who functions have a noticeably special impact upon. Native Americans. So this evening, we are asking for meaningful consultation on this matter as it directly impacts and interferes with the laws of the federal government and Commonwealth. Failure to respect the tribe's sovereignty and rights will be seen as another attack on our nation, the same people who welcomed your ancestors over four hundred years ago. In fact, this evening, the town of Mashpee Select Board will be voting on the shellfish regulations with language that includes the tribe's Aboriginal rights. And I would encourage the Commonwealth to follow their lead and engage in meaningful consultation. Katavatash, thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Chairman Whedon. Director McKernan, I'm not seeing any more hands raised among members of the audience. So would you like to provide some concluding remarks on tonight's hearing?
Sure. Thank you, Jared. As was mentioned earlier, if you've heard something or learned something. And you wanted to put those comments in writing to us, it's always a very effective way to communicate. We do submit all written testimony to our Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission before any final votes. I'd like to thank everybody for their, their time tonight. And, and have a great, great evening. So thank you for participating and the commission will be voting on these final actions a week from Thursday on the June sixteenth. So thanks, Jared. Thanks, everyone who's attended and have a great night.